Well, it's just about 12:05 and we've given a little extra time just to let people log on to this meeting. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church. It's a great pleasure to be joined this afternoon by superintendent of schools, Peter Noonan, who will join me in doing a walkthrough. I'll do some slides on the proposed general government budget. And Peter will walk through the school board's request that is folded into the budget that is now before the city council. We are joined by a number of members of the city council and Mayor Tarter. I can introduce everybody, but let me just turn it over to you first for a few introductory comments and then we'll go from there.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Shields. As you heard, I'm David Carter, the mayor of City of Falls Church. I'm joined by, looks like Letty Hardy on city council, and I'm not sure, I can't tell who else, but I'm sure there are a few other folks here. And on behalf of my colleagues, I'd like to welcome you to this town hall. As you will hear, the purpose is twofold, A, to give you information about the city and school budgets, but maybe more importantly, to hear your input and your thoughts and your questions and your guidance for us as to your priorities. I know this has been a tough year for a lot of folks. It's been a tough year for our schools and our city. And we're not through this yet, but I think in a lot of ways, we have persevered. And we've got a lot of good things going on right now with the cooperation of our school colleagues. We've got a brand new high school for our students for generations to come, which I think is just really exciting. Our library is on time and on budget, as is the 10-acre development. A new Whole Foods is coming to town. So we've got a lot of good things that I think we have been able to keep on track through this time. But I understand, and I think we all do, what a difficult and challenging time it's been for, for all of you in particular, our small businesses, our families who are suffering. And we appreciate the great work of city staff, our teachers, police, fire, all the folks who have really raised it up a year in this extremely challenging year. So again, we're here today to hear from you. We understand this is a difficult time for everyone. We look forward to your input. This is the start of the process, not the finish of it. We've just introduced the budget just a few days ago publicly. So there are many more weeks that you'll have an opportunity to comment and to give us your input, but we look forward to hearing from you. So thank you so much. Wyatt?
Thank you so much, Mayor Tarter, for those introductory comments. I think that does just a great job in setting the stage for our budget discussions. I will note that, yes, as you noted, council member Letty Hardy is on the call. Council member Phil Duncan is as well. And so thank you both for joining. And before I launch into the slides that I have prepared for the budget presentation, Dr. Noonan, are there any introductory comments that you would like to make before we get started?
Thank you, Mr. Shields, city manager. I appreciate you being here and giving us an opportunity as well to share the school board's advertised budget. I would note that on the call today, we do have our vice chair of the school board, Laura Downs, is on. So I want to thank her for joining us as well. And then when I get to my presentation, I'll provide a little more context about the school board's advertised budget. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and really great to be able to do this together with you today. And Susan Finirelli is our director of communications, and she's moderating this town hall meeting. It's always tricky to do them effectively on a virtual format. Susan, could you just say a word about how people can ask questions and interact with us on this, on this meeting?
Absolutely. We have a nice group here today. So certainly if you have any questions, you can use the MS Teams app to raise your hand. And I will call on you if you also prefer to put in the chat, hey, I'd like to say something. Or even we can read your question aloud if you put it in the chat, if you're feeling a little shy today. So those are the ways to ask questions and make comments today.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, let me share my screen and we'll go through. I've got just about over 20 slides and I'll go through them pretty briskly so that we have plenty of time for the school board presentation as well as your questions and input and comments on it. And let me go to full screen here. Okay.
Looks perfect.
All right. And I'll also note that we're joined on this call by Karen Bawa, who's our chief financial officer. And she will join in and answering any questions that you have. Cindy Mester takes the lead in developing our capital improvements program. We have a work session next Monday to go into detail on that capital improvements program. But each year, that CIP is always a really important part of the budget and really merits attention and public comment as well. So I just want to highlight that. So as the mayor set the stage for this, we still do have a great deal of uncertainty, both in the economy and in terms of the public impacts and the, the needs of the community as we still grapple with this pandemic and hopefully as vaccination ramps up, which it is doing, I think really strongly, that we'll be emerging from this pandemic. And, but we're still in it right now, and that is a big uncertainty in budget planning. So, you know, we anticipate that we'll probably be making some further adjustments as we go through the coming year just to meet the needs as they emerge. Key investments in the budget, we do have investments in public safety and in emergency management. Obviously, this is a big year for emergency management, but public safety also. We had the use of force review committee and our own internal reform work and equity work as a city. And so we're trying to begin the steps of funding that in this budget. Ongoing effort and attention to flood mitigation in our stormwater fund. The city council has had a multi-year priority to improve walkability and safety and traffic calming throughout the city. That's, I will talk about how we fund that in the budget. Compensation for our city workforce, this is a really dynamic time for the city government. We're trying to accomplish really big and challenging things. And it's really important that we invest in our workforce so that we have the talent here to be able to accomplish these goals. Investments in our responsive government and funding the school board requests. Those are some of the big priorities in this budget. This budget does, as it's been put together, provide for a reduction in the real estate tax rate by one penny. I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. And there are also major state and federal grants that are pending. Obviously, the American Recovers Act is slated to be signed by President Biden on Friday. So we've been watching that very closely. That's not yet built into the budget. And so we'll be discussing that and how it can impact the budget for the coming year and really probably for the next multiple years. It's a major piece of legislation. So my next slide has a lot of information on it, and so if you'll bear with me, I'll just try to unpack this a little bit and walk us through it. So at the top line here, well, let's start at the bottom line. The, the budget for FY22 is $106 million budget largely because of major contributions to capital reserves coming from the 10-acre site up on the, next to the high school and the Founder's Row voluntary concessions. That's where the $6.2 million is coming from, those two contributions. With that, the budget is growing by 8.6%. If you get rid of those capital reserve contributions, the budget actually is growing 2.2%. So it is a, it's a, it's a budget that is mindful of the economic, the need for, for very careful financial planning in, as we emerge from the pandemic. In the general government, so the school transfer is growing 2.5% to a budget of just under $44 million. That's the local contribution. There's also some other state and federal funds that Peter will talk about in just a moment. For general government, our budget is just over $41 million in '22. Just under a million dollar increase or 2.3% increase. In this budget, we do have built into the, the budget, $100,000 contribution to affordable housing. That's the first time that that's ever been the case. And I think that reflects the city council's priority in that area and trying to respond to that. We do have a contingency in the budget of $200,000. We are putting some additional resources into building permits and we're using our permit reserves. Those are the fees principally played by developers, Founder's Row being an example, where we pull down the reserves to increase our capacity in that area. Debt service is actually going down to 14.2 million, and it's going down for two reasons. One, we canceled some debt issuances last year as a result of the COVID emergency. And we also refunded some earlier debt issuances to take advantage of lower interest rates. So we have a benefit there. And then we get a return on equity for an investment that the city council made when we sold the water system. The council put $9 million of those sale proceeds into the pension fund, and that provides an ongoing benefit for the taxpayers in the amount of $640,000 a year. So that's a quick summary, and now we'll go into a little bit more detail. This is just an overview of our operating revenues. 58% of the city budget comes from real estate taxes. I've broken real estate taxes into the residential component and the commercial component. So those residential, you know, single-family homes, townhouses and condos is the major portion of our, of our, of our tax base. This whole fan here is about 25% of business taxes, going from sales taxes to meals taxes, business licenses and the like. Then the remainder of state and federal is a very small part of our operating budget, charges for service and other. So that's just to give you some orientation of where our revenues come from. And here are some trends in revenues, just for your awareness. I'll note a few of them. With the one penny reduction in real estate tax rate, there still is an increase in real estate taxes due to assessed value growth. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. Car sales have been strong actually through the pandemic. We cut this line item significantly last year, so this was really just bringing us back a bit from the cuts that we made last year. Sales taxes, in fact, have exceeded last year's sales tax figures. And so we attribute a lot of that to higher grocery store sales as well as to online sales is the reason for the growth in sales tax receipts. We cut sales taxes, however, very significantly last year for the, because of the pandemic. So that, it's not truly a 23% in terms of, over our baseline. But it is about a 10% increase over our actuals two years ago. Meals taxes, that's a bounce back from a big cut that we made last year. So meals, restaurants have not at all recovered yet from the pandemic. And we're being careful in that revenue forecast, on business licenses and other taxes. Similarly, being fairly careful with. Other taxes includes hotel tax, and so that's, the hospitality industry is still, you know, our hotels in the city are running at maybe 30% occupancy. They were about 10% occupancy through the summer, so we're hoping for them to come back. That's a part of our, of our economic base. It's really been very hard hit. Other local revenues, one that's dropped significantly is, is a return on investments. The city does have some cash that we invest in very conservative things, but interest rates have gone effectively to zero. So that's one big reduction. And then one other reduction is fines. Our police department has not been out issuing speeding tickets and, and parking violations through the pandemic. And that's why there's been a big reduction there as well. Okay, assessed values, just talk about that in a bit more detail. So overall, we have a 2.7% growth in AV. The majority of that growth is in the housing sector. We do have about a market appreciation on average of 3.5%. And 0.6% is new construction that you see out in your neighborhoods of tear downs and rebuilds. And then importantly, in the commercial sector, the market depreciation was just under 6%. And that's COVID related, obviously. However, Founder's Row specifically is bringing about $55 million of new construction in. And so commercial just barely made up for those normal market depreciation because of COVID and vacancies in offices and things like that. Apartments also are down slightly. In terms of new construction, that is over half of the growth of AV in the past year. This new construction is worth about three, it's equivalent of about 3.5 cents on the tax rate. So that is an important part of our budget story this year. The tax rate, we're talking about reducing it by a penny. And the city council will make the final decision on this, and we'll be having much discussion about this over the coming weeks, I'm sure. Even with that penny reduction, the average homeowner will see approximately about a 3% increase in their tax bill or $291 on average. Most of you have seen your assessments, so you know individually what that looks like. Since the average house in the city is worth about $750,000, every penny on the tax rate is worth about $75 for your average homeowner. These are our trends in terms of what the tax bills have been doing over the past several years. So that $291 increase would take us to about $10,120 for your average homeowner in the city. And then this bar chart is the tax rates over time with the penny reduction down to $1.34 and a half. I'm going to talk about our expenditures now, and I've got just a few slides on that. Some of the major priorities that we're funding in the budget. Education is the largest share of, of the city budget, and that's the transfer to the school board. Over here in the blue is debt service, and that is now 14% of the budget because of the major capital projects we've taken on, including the new high school. And so debt service is sort of broken out, this portion of it is to schools and this portion of it is to general government. Going around the horn, some of the other larger areas of, of our budget are, include administration. Our courts and jails is 2%, public safety, which is fire and police, 16%. That's the second largest part of our budget. Public works, 5%, recreation parks and our library is 5% of the budget. Health and welfare, 3%. Community planning and building permits and inspections is 5% of the budget. So some of the, the main investments that we are making in this budget, we're sustaining the $150,000 that's been built into the budget last year to fund conversion to LED streetlights. And this year, it will be converted actually over to new sidewalk construction throughout the city. And we want to sustain that so we can slowly build up our missing links in our sidewalk network. Neighborhood traffic calming, we're funding at $100,000. We will also be administering this year the major Greenway Downs neighborhood traffic calming program, which is a federal grant in the amount of $636,000. That's underway. We've assembled the neighborhood teams to kind of help us identify the preferred traffic calming measures. And so there's a lot going on in that area. And we're also increasing paving to bring it up to $400,000 a year just to keep our, our roads in working order. Whenever we repave, we also put in bike facilities and make sure our ped crossings are fresh and safe as well. We have big grants in the area of transportation, and we'll be administering these over the coming years. Some of the ones that are active right now include the Maple and South Washington intersection and, and all of these projects here. I won't list them all. Funded for next year, we'll be mostly doing engineering in the coming year. Park Avenue Great Streets, which takes it from the State Theater to the library to really kind of enhance the, the streetscape on Park Avenue and also to bury the utility wires on that portion of Park Avenue. The West Falls project that's underway right now, we'll continue that in the coming year. And the South Oak Street Bridge, which is right there next to TJ Elementary School, that bridge will be replaced in the coming year. Public health and safety, I mentioned earlier, the use of force committee recommendations. We will be moving forward as a city with body worn cameras. Currently, we have dash cams, but we'll move to body worn cameras. The police department really supports that and wants to make that move. Part of this $145,000 is grant funded. We have some additional civilian help for the department as well, including a part-time officer who will help us with their photo read, school bus camera, and also moving forward with school, school zone camera speed controls. And we need staff to be able to review the video footage before any citations can be issued under any of those programs. Well, we do have a retiree, Becky Keenan is planning to retire this coming year. So we would fill that position with one of our public safety aides. And, and also fortify our emergency management function, which we've done this year using CARES dollars, but we would sustain that in the budget going forward. Also want to let the public be aware that we're in discussions right now with Arlington County of moving our local 911 dispatch function over to the Arlington County Emergency Communications Center. That would be a big move for us. We've always had our own 911 dispatch here in city hall, and it does have lots of operational issues that we need to work through, but that is something that we're exploring right now. Also, in terms of building permit activity, we will add an additional, we're proposing to add an additional position in the budget for customer service for permit intake to really strengthen that and, and sustain funding for contracted services as well as the two additional inspectors we hired this past year using the permit reserves to, to deal with the high school, Founder's Row, the, the Whole Foods project that the mayor mentioned at the outset, and notably, the West Falls project up by the high school. A lot of building activity in the city. In terms of investment and equity and inclusiveness, this is a priority for the city. We want to more actively promote our scholarships for wrecking parks programs. We currently offer those, but not many people know about them. And we really want to make all of our wrecking parks camps, sports activities accessible to everyone in the community. So we've put additional money towards that. Additional money for tax relief for seniors, veterans and the disabled. I would note, we're not proposing any changes to that program, but our actual use of existing policy has been higher than we originally budgeted. That's what that $42,000 is, is to fund that. We have the $100,000 contribution to affordable housing, which will be used in part to match a $3.7 million grant that's been approved to the city through the Amazon Reach program. And that has not yet been put into the city's coffers, but we've been notified that we've been awarded that grant. So we're looking forward to implementing that in the coming year. Some of the ongoing investments, downtown beautification and investments, we use a portion of the hotel tax for that purpose, and so we'll continue to do that. The Park Master Plan, that's a debt funded item of $150,000 to carry out the Wreckin' Park Advisory Board's plans for all of our citywide parks. A crucial investment for us is an employee compensation. We're proposing in the budget a 3% merit increase for city employees and a 3.5% step increase for police uniform staff. Health insurance growth will be modest, and we have the additional FTEs, which I've been describing throughout this presentation. So far, the ones I haven't touched on, I will in just a second for HR. And then for the library, because we'll have a new library building and larger, we are increasing our custodial support for that facility. In HR, we do have an additional position to support recruitment. And that's a, as, as we kind of emerge from the vacancy freeze, which we had, have had for the past year, we're currently about 15% of our workforce right now is, is vacant because of that vacancy freeze. We'll be hiring up, and it's really important that we bring really talented and diverse people into the city workforce. And so we're, we're, that position will be very helpful for us in doing that. We are investing in our fleet. This is mostly in the Department of Public Works in terms of the equipment they use to maintain our streets, et cetera. We use debt to do that, five-year short-term debt for our fleet. Ongoing reinvestment in our facilities and investment in our IT core infrastructure. That's so important now, particularly with cyber risks and how much dependence everybody has to do basic government services with IT resources. We do have significant unmet needs. Department directors have put on about $4 million of unmet needs in our, in this year's budget. And that's because we've, we've been very disciplined in our budgeting for six-plus years, where the guidance every year to start with is to hold budgets flat, other than personnel, you know, to, to address salary needs. So we are, you know, some of the things that we, we ultimately are going to need to fund is additional police officers, more investments in IT, more economic development, marketing through our Office of Communications, and more investment in our wrecking parks facilities. Those are just some examples of a very long list of, of needs that are not in the budget. I've got just two more slides. On the stormwater fund, we do have significant investments in the budget for flood mitigation. These are the six priority projects from the Stormwater Task Force that is in the budget. We are asking the council and the community for a 2% rate increase in our stormwater fee. That will help basically pay the fund for the smaller stormwater projects we've done over the past year to try to address some nuisance flooding that's been happening throughout the city. The average rate increase of that 2% would be about $5 for the median homeowner. We do anticipate with these major projects, however, that there will be more significant rate increases in the future. However, we are looking very closely at the federal action, what Congress did just this week. And some of those dollars might be used for infrastructure, and that might be one way that we fund at least a portion of these flood mitigation projects. All right, for the sanitary sewer fund, I think the key thing here is we aren't proposing a rate increase for the sanitary sewer fund. We will have a rate study over the coming year just to make sure that we're, we're keeping that fund stable and, and where it needs to be. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Noonan in just a moment. But in terms of some of the key dates, obviously, we're having today's budget town hall meeting. The council on March 22nd will give first reading to the budget ordinance. They'll hold a public hearing on that and the tax rate and the stormwater item. We'll have an additional public hearing on April 12th. We'll have a second town hall meeting on April 15th. And the council is scheduled to take final action on the budget and the capital improvements program on April 26th. So we'll keep that calendar up to date on the city's webpage. And we always have these links where people can find out information and send in comments as we go throughout the process. That's crucial to, to budgeting is to get as much public input as possible. So thank you for, for listening to the presentation. I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan, and then we'll take questions to, for both of us after his presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, and good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here and to be able to present the school board's budget. But before I do, I want to thank Laura Downs, our vice chair, again, for being on the call today. I'd also like to just give some gratitude to a couple of people that have worked really hard inside our departments on this budget. And the first is our budget director, Michelle Kopic. She has worked diligently along with our chief operating officer, Kristen Michael, here in the City of Falls Church schools to help pull together what we believe is a really great budget for the schools. Fundamentally, I, I want to make sure that everybody kind of understands that there is a significant difference between the school's budgeting process and the city's budgeting process insofar as today, I will be presenting the school board's adopted budget, advertised budget, excuse me. This is not a staff budget. So we started our budgeting process in the schools in December. And in January, I presented the superintendent's budget that included many of the things that you'll see today. We held three public hearings on the school's budget. And then the school board went ahead and adopted the, that, the budget that I had presented as the advertised budget. So while Mayor Tarter said it's just the beginning for the city budget, the schools have been in the throes of budgeting since December. And so now, today, I get the opportunity to share the school board's advertised budget, and it's no longer a staff budget. So let me, let me just, Susan, if you go to the next slide. I want to start with just the value of our partnership. We have an incredible partnership, not only with the general government and the city council, but also with the community. And I want to thank everyone for their incredible support of the work. And I want to thank everyone for their incredible support of the work of the schools. It has been an extraordinary year. But we've done some, we've done some really good work in the schools. And the first thing on the right-hand side is we did have a virtual ribbon cutting for our new high school that opened on February 21st officially. We did come in on time and on budget with the building, all during a pandemic. At the same time, we were able to maintain a hybrid and are working towards a more full-time opportunity to move forward in the last quarter as we prepare for some semblance of normalcy at the start of next year with the the widening of opportunity for people to get vaccinated and the like. With respect to budget, this year will be the third consecutive year that the City of Falls Church Schools is sharing a budget that came in within the guidance that was presented to us in December by the general government and the city council. So I'm going back to December. We held a meeting with, a joint meeting with the city council, where 2.5% transfer was the organic revenue growth and using some contours of a revenue-sharing agreement that's more of a handshake deal than anything. But we have now, for the third year, sort of met the guidance, and we're very proud of that, we've been able to put together a budget. In this partnership, it obviously has allowed us to do this incredible new high school. We collaborated on a lot of development, the 10-acre parcel across from the high school that will help with a lot of the debt service for the high school. We've we've gotten some great support with, from the general government, with our property yard and parking our buses and through the pandemic as well. And we're very appreciative, not only of the general government, but of the community as a whole. Next slide, please. So we are rooted in the system, the school system, really in three big ideas. One is, as I think everybody here knows, we're one of seven school divisions across the country that are continuum IB districts. And we are one of seven, which means that we off offer the International Baccalaureate Program from kindergarten through 12th grade. And we incorporate and infuse the IB program into everything that we do. We are supporting a caring community and culture, which has been particularly of import this year, making sure that we have taken care of our employees through this pandemic and also making sure that we've taken care of our families. So some of the things, for example, that we've done is provided food to all of the families that needed it. Every Friday, they come and get boxes. We've been able to maintain our staffing levels through the pandemic and repurposed work of staff. And actually, we've we've provided some staff to the city government to help support them as well, because we really believe that taking care of those that take care of us is a really important aspect of the work that we do. And the last piece, or the last pillar, if you will, of achieving our mission is closing gaps. And that is really about ensuring that every student that comes to the City of Falls Church High School, City of Falls Church Schools gets a really high-quality education and with high expectations, and that we support those students that need extra time and support for learning. However, we need to provide that to ensure that they achieve at a high level. So in the next slide, you'll see our girls' basketball team, which is the state champion basketball team in Virginia. We want to just give them a shout out and a congratulations to them before I talk about the revenues. So if we go to the next slide, there are three different pots of money that the schools receive revenue from to support our budget. So as the city manager indicated, the vast majority of the city's budget is where our dollars come from. And we rely very heavily on the city to provide 81.5% of our operating budget. And that does come from local revenues. Susan, I can't see the slides anymore. I don't know if that's just me or if everybody else can see the slides. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that 81.5% of our operating revenue comes from the general government. The rest of the funding comes from state funds and also federal funds. So when you combine the state funds that we receive from Virginia, along with our local revenues, that accounts for about 96.2% of our overall budget. And then the balance of our revenue comes from federal dollars, and the vast majority of those are for students with disabilities. And then the last bit of money that we count on each year is some beginning balance and some other revenues that we collect. So next slide talks about the general guidance and revenue sharing that I indicated before. So on December 14th, you can go ahead and skip to the next slide. On December 14th, we did meet with the general government, where we were given a 2.5% organic growth number. And sort of the contour, rough contours of that revenue-sharing agreement indicate that we'll try to do the very best we can to live within guidance. And then any additional revenue that comes in from the general government then is shared typically at a 50-50 rate. So I think we're one slide ahead now, sorry. So 2.5% for us represents just over $1 million of additional transfer from the general government, and we use that as our starting point. And and as I said before, our revenue-sharing methodology is that any additional revenue that comes in beyond that 2.5% guidance is shared at a 50-50 rate. And for the third year in a row, as I said before, we have met that guidance. Next slide. So let me talk about state revenue. State revenue is based on the governor's proposed budget. And that came out on December 16th. And that amount of money represents about 14.5% of our overall revenue picture. So our state aid this year coming in is going to provide for us about $4.8 million. And that is an increase, a slight increase over projected. And then the sales tax increased, just like in the city. The sales tax in the state has also grown during this pandemic. So we are expecting about an 11.9% increase in sales tax or about a $307,000 increase into our budget. That budget will be finalized by the General Assembly this this spring. So next slide. So a little bit of information, just in terms of the state conference. And some of this is, has been overcome by events. But we are looking at some government's action. There was in the state legislature and in the governments or governors' final budget, a 5% increase of pay for teachers by July 1 of 20, effective July 1 of 2021. And what that means is that school divisions across the Commonwealth are expected to provide a 5% increase to all of their teachers and staff in order to access the full 5% that is available of dollars from the state. Unfortunately, it has to all be done within this biennium, which includes last year as well as this year. And last year, as you may recall, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to give any kind of compensation increase. So we aren't this year able to meet the full 5%, but we are getting close, which means that we are able to access some of the funding that's set up from the state to help support our increase in compensation, which I'll talk about in just a second. Some other things to pay attention to in the budget that have been nice for us has been ship during the pandemic. In the state budget, there is a no-funding-loss provision based on ADM. And I'll I'll talk about that a little bit further in a few minutes. There is some extra funding in there to support learning loss. And then, as I indicated, some higher hired amounts that we expect from sales tax. Next slide. So let me talk about expenditures. And this is a, just a quick picture that shows you our new auditorium and how we are social distancing to participate in musical programming. And I'm not sure that it's up there on your screen yet, Susan. There we go. So you'll see how we're social distancing and providing, this actually is with the woodwind ensemble. So we've got some clarinets in the front, saxophones in the back. And anyway, good, good opportunity to use all of the space that we have available the next at our new high school. So next slide, Susan. So you'll see there are three major priorities for the schools. When when I presented the budget to the school board, when we held the public hearings, the three public hearings about it, and then as the school board adopted their advertised budget. The first is around compensation. Because we weren't able to do compensation for our staff and employees last year of any sort, this year, we are, we are including in our budget a step increase, which provides an average of 2.5% increase for all of our employees that are eligible. And there's only a few employees that aren't eligible, and typically, those are folks that are at the end of the longevity scale. So the vast majority of all of our employees will get a step increase, which represents about a 2.5% increase. And then we also have included in our budget a cost-of-living adjustment. For us, every half a percent of cost-of-living adjustment represents about $210,000. And because of some work on the the backend that we've been able to do with our budget to really tighten up a few things, we are including in the school's budget a 1.5% cost-of-living adjustment. So the vast majority of our employees in the system will get a 4% increase overall. And the good news about being able to do both a step and a COLA is that that cost-of-living adjustment actually moves our salary scales up, which increases our opportunities to be competitive in the surrounding jurisdictions and really bring in the best teachers and staff that that are out there, who are looking to make a little bit more money. So in the next slide, you'll see some benefit rate increases. And so we are expecting a very small increase in the Virginia retire or in retirement of about $4,500. So that's not very significant, but every, every little, I'm sorry, a reduction in that amount. So every little bit helps. Our health insurance rates, as the city manager indicated, and we are in the same system as the city government, are not going to be as high as we anticipated. So we are expecting a $51,000 increase in health insurance. And then we have about $60,000 in other post-employment benefits that we pay to our employees. Susan, we might be a slide behind here. So that was the benefit rate increase slide. There we go. So that gives a little bit of the information that I just shared. So if we go one more slide, I want to talk about enrollment briefly. Enrollment for 2022 is expected to come in at about 2,605 across the system. That is an increase of 101 students from the September 30th date. As I indicated, we did lose some enrollment this year to homeschool and to some private schools. We are already starting to see some of our homeschoolers come back to school. We have seen a steady stream of people who have decided to leave homeschool and come back as we become more fully open in our schools. And so we anticipate that that enrollment number of 2,605 is is going to be strong. And it may actually exceed that. So we're we're monitoring it very closely. We have been in contact with all of our families to see who will be coming back and who won't. In the next slide, you'll see the FY22 investments. And these are some investments that are, so I mentioned that there were three buckets. We had the compensation bucket, and now these are sort of investments in our future. We know as we leave the impacts of COVID that there are going to be some needs across our system, both academically and emotionally and socially. So the first set of opportunity here and investments are to think about the academics and the social-emotional needs. So we have included in the school's budget and the school board adopted this advertised budget to include an English Language Arts coordinator for all of our schools, pre-K through 12. We currently have someone who does this work in mathematics, and we've seen extraordinary gains. This person would provide professional development for our teachers and also would support our teachers in their work with students who may have experienced some of the pandemic slide, particularly in the area of English Language Arts and reading. We also are increasing a social, by a social worker to support our students' overall wellness. We are gonna, we have seen, and we know we're going to see more students that are coming to us that have some social-emotional needs and being able to have a social worker to connect with that can provide opportunities to refer out to different agencies is really important. We also know that some of our families have suffered tremendous loss, not only loss through COVID itself, but loss of of jobs and and the like. And so that social worker can help them as well. We also are increasing our number of school counselors, and this is to meet the governor's new ratios that just came out. But we also think it's the right thing to do, because our students will have an opportunity to have one more go-to person for social-emotional wellness. And then the last piece of our post-COVID impact is replacing our one-to-one student devices. We are on a four-year rolling cycle of this. And so the time was up for us to go ahead and do some replacement. And so that will keep us current with all of the technology in the event that we do need to continue with any kind of online learning. And we have heard from some parents that next year, they may want to consider keeping some of their students online. So we want to be prepared for that. And then the last piece in terms of investments for us is how we're spending money to support our new high school. We just made a $120 million investment, and we want to make sure that the maintenance of that facility and operations of that facility stay strong. So in order for us to be able to maintain that, we need to hire some additional staff. In the next slide, when we take all of those investments together with our overall amount of revenue, they don't match. We have more expenditures than we have revenue. So that means we needed to do some reductions and some realignments on the backside to make this all work for us. So we have looked at all of our salary files. We have brought down to almost a penny and looked at our turnover. So we are going to be able to save some money, because we do have some retirements, and we're hiring some teachers that don't have the experience that other teachers might have, for example. We know that we're going to be able to lower the cost of some of our employment benefits as we transition out of a retirement program that was put in place a long time ago. We are going to eliminate a paraprofessional at first grade, but that's because of enrollment. And so that first-grade teacher is going to move up to second grade, and we'll be able to find another position that is currently vacant for a paraprofessional. We are going to utilize some of our staffing reserve that we have set aside to help our our budget balance. And then we are looking at our instructional services that are contracted with other jurisdictions to bring that cost down as well by $100,000. So we are taking internal sort of backside adjustments in the amount of $693,000. So then this slide indicates sort of the overall summary. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the revenue adjustments, and and that shows not only the local funding, but also state aid. And then on the right-hand side, shows where we would be spending our money and also making adjustments as well. The next slide shows some pie charts, and these are important. Just to remind everybody that's here that the vast majority of our funding goes to staff. We do spend about 85, 86% of our budget on staff. And that is important for us, because one of the values in our system is to maintain small class sizes. If we went to to larger class sizes, we wouldn't need as many staff. But because we are maintaining those low-class sizes, we do have more staff. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see where, again, where where the revenue is coming in. On the next slide, we did put in our budget calendar as well. And so you'll note on this slide that we started our budget process in November. And then we have the joint meeting in December. And then, if you want to go to the next slide that shows the budget calendar, you'll see that we held a number of meetings leading up to this. And then there are some city, now we've turned over the school board's budget to the city and are being incorporated into their budget calendar. And then if we just skip to the more information slide. In this more information slide, is anybody? Susan, can you skip ahead? There we go. Can you go back? There we go. In this slide, we just want to make sure that everybody knows where to get information. The information is all housed on our website. We do get budget questions that come in, not only from the school board, but also we get a few from the city council every year. And we post all of those, and we number them, and they're catalogued, and all of those are available for review. But we also maintain all of our budget documents on this website as well to maintain full transparency with respect to how we budget. So I'm going to end there and just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to share the school board's budget. Not board, and and excited to answer any questions on their behalf.
So thank you for listening to both of our presentations. And Susan, I'm going to turn it over to you to help facilitate any public questions or comments that come in through the chat box, et cetera.
Certainly, if anyone has a question, you're welcome to raise your hand in the MS Teams platform. You can also type in your question or type in, hey, I'd like to say something. So if anyone has a question, please let us know.
And while we're waiting for questions, I'll note that Councilmember Dave Snyder has joined the meeting.
I think your presentations were so complete and informative. People don't have questions, it seems.
Well, we're happy to, at least I'll speak for the schools. And on behalf of the school board, I'd be happy to take any questions in writing that come in. So if anyone wants to send us questions, we certainly are, are happy to answer them as best we can, if somebody gets one after today.
How do you, sorry, how do you, oh, raise your hand. There we go.
That's okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, um, yes, hi, this is Courtney, and I wanted to thank everyone for their, here, let me put my camera on. Hi, I wanted to thank everyone for their presentation today. It's very, as someone who is new to digging into local budgets and politics, this has been really informative and helpful, so I, I appreciate everyone. My, my questions actually, not really questions, but I, I first of all, wanted to acknowledge Dr. Noonan. I know we've had the opportunity to speak a little bit here lately. And, and I do genuinely appreciate the uptick of engagement and communication from the school around all of the happenings and where we are with things. We are constantly, or at least I have tried to make an effort to be in contact with families in the area who have questions. And I know you've, we've been trying to funnel some questions to you as we get them. One of the things that has recently come up, particularly at the middle school and high school level, because I do know that as you go through your planning process and you're looking at how to get more kids in the building, I do have a specific question around accommodations and access issue around the IEP and 504 students at the middle school and high school level and what the plan is to ensure accommodation, full-time accommodations for those who want it. I do know you guys, and I, I want to give all the credit to the Cohort One teachers who have been in-person and teaching at the elementary school level and offering full-time for them. But I do think as taxpayers and as parents, it's critically important that we do whatever we can to ensure access to everyone who wants it, considering that forty-one percent of our budget is going to schools. So where are we with that cohort specifically, IEP and 504s? And also, what is your level of confidence of ensuring access to all students who would like it prior to the end of the year? And the reason I ask this is because, you know, I personally, well, I have a third grader, and I'm going to be holding my breath until we get them back full-time in a couple of weeks. And I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that. I can't imagine being the parent of an older child, not having that sense of confidence and not having that experience prior to the end of the year and kind of crossing their fingers, hoping that that's the case going into the fall. I think that that's very untenable for a lot of parents and really concerning at older, for older parents. So I just would love to hear feedback on those two things directly. And again, appreciate all of your hard work behind this.
Thanks, Courtney, I appreciate that. Not exactly a budget question, but I, I'm happy to answer.
Well, access and access and, and accommodation, I do think speaks to budget, because we are paying for these services and parents haven't been able to, to take advantage the way that they need to. And it's driven, it's driven parents out of the workforce. I mean, we have a lot of examples of that, so go ahead, sorry.
I, no, it's okay. I think, I think that, that is certainly debatable with respect to a free, appropriate public education, which is sort of what you're referencing with students with IEPs and students that need modification within the 504. It's not a matter of wanting it. We, we absolutely have to provide a, a free, appropriate public education. There has been, because we've been in a pandemic, there have been a number of rulings that suggest that through the IEP process, being online does provide a free, appropriate public education, given the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic. Those students that are on 504, they'll receive their modifications through their online programming. So those teachers and those school counselors have been working diligently to make sure that our students are receiving FAP through the online, online program. While imperfect it is under the offer. To your second point, with respect to confidence in coming back, I have a meeting at two o'clock with the principal, Principal Hardy and Principal Hills to work through their reopening plan. I will tell you that at the high school right now, all seniors, juniors have access to four days a week in, in our schools. Two of them are online and can do their online in-school, but they can do it right outside of the classroom where their teacher is currently teaching. So they can flag them down through the window and ask them questions, pop out and talk with students. And, and so we are increasing the, the level of in-person instruction at the high school in particular, very rapidly. And I would assume the same thing will happen at the middle school as we continue to look at space and utilizing both the middle school and the high school together. So my hope is that sometime during the fourth quarter, we should have a fairly equivalent program at the secondary level as we will at the elementary level following spring break.
Great, thank you. Are we allowed to ask more than one question? I just, I want to give everybody else an opportunity, I just was wondering.
Sure, sure, yeah, we, I don't see many other hands raised. Cindy, we'll go to you next. But yes, Courtney, if you have another question, feel free, go ahead.
But I'll let Cindy go.
Good afternoon, everyone. Cindy Muster, and as Mr. Shields noted, I'm Deputy City Manager. I just want to take the opportunity to highlight again the CIP process. And council will have a work session on the CIP on Monday, this upcoming Monday, seven-thirty. So if anybody wants to know more details from the highlights that Mr. Shields provided today, that'll be a good opportunity and it'll also be recorded and broadcast. Thank you.
All right, Courtney, if you have another question, feel free. And otherwise, I'll keep looking at the chat, see if anyone has questions in there or want to speak. Otherwise, you can also raise your hand.
Perfect. My other question is more directed to the budget numbers and enrollment. You know, in listening to the city council meeting the other night, I, I do believe one of the questions was around the budget and the per-student and the enrollment. And the fact that the school has been in communication with families who have unenrolled and also, you know, looking at, to try to determine our, our enrollment numbers for the next year. Again, we have about three-hundred people that we can kind of survey through our, our Facebook page with families who are engaging. One of the questions that we actually put up was, if you're a family that is unenrolled, have you been in contact with the school around your plans for next fall? We had probably forty families that indicated that they had not received any contact for, from the school at this point in time, who are currently unenrolled, either, and enrolled either in private school, pods, or homeschooling. And so my question is, is there a plan to send out a survey to parents to get an actual, real-world, an actual, real-world feedback on people's enrollment plans going into the fall for parents who have previously been engaged in the system and currently engaged in the system, so that we can more accurately assess what those enrollment numbers truly will look like in a more recent polling of parents, especially in light of all the movement that's been happening in the last couple of weeks?
So thanks for the question. My understanding from our principals were that they were in contact with the, through their counselors with those students that had gone to homeschool. So that's interesting information for me to hear from you. There was a survey that went out last night that went to all of our elementary parents. And I believe it went to those families that also did not enroll this year or pulled their students out, but I will double-check that to make sure. But there was an email that went out last night with a survey. But our enrollment numbers, and this gives me an opportunity to talk about where they come from. We do use the Weldon Cooper Institute down at the University of Virginia, who does all of the, all of the numbers for the state of Virginia as well. And that's how the state determines a per-pupil amount throughout the Commonwealth. And they gave us three different options to look at, sort of a, where we are now, with nobody coming back, one with everybody coming back, and then sort of a middle road. And we did select the middle road, because we thought it was probably the most accurate. But now, as I'm seeing people come back to our schools after being homeschooled, just in the last two weeks, we may have shot low, but we will continue to monitor that internally.
All right, thank you. I am not seeing any other questions at this time. Again, you can raise your hand, type your question into the chat. All right, great. I think that is it, Wyatt.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for joining in on a midday town hall. We've done these throughout the pandemic, just because we, our thinking has been that that actually can be a convenient time for people who are logging in while they're at work or at home. Our next budget town hall meeting will be at night, however, just to try to hit people who it might be more convenient for nighttime. And that town hall will be on April fifteenth at seven-thirty. And all of our city council meetings will be focused on budget between now and April twenty-sixth. And so those are always an opportunity to plug in, see the discussion. And at the public hearing on March twenty-second at seven-thirty PM and the public hearing on April twelfth at seven-thirty PM and the public hearing on April twenty-sixth at seven-thirty PM, those are three additional opportunities to weigh in and provide your input, suggestions, advice, commentary on the, on the budget process. So that's it for today. I want to thank everybody again, and we look forward to engaging with you over the coming weeks. Thank you and be safe.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, thanks.